Welcome to the Daily, or rather, welcome back. This is first year we're trying to, um, or we tried to sit down with candidates, um, directly in our district. We extended the same invitation to your opponent for the form and the interview. But they cited scheduling, um, or their schedule being too full in these last few weeks. I think we'll inter- introduce ourselves real quick before jumping in.
Right.
My name is Deb McBride. I'm our development editor here. Um, I'm a member of our editorial board. Um.
I'm Claudia. Uh, I am our news editor this quarter.
Awesome.
Um, I'm Rachel. I'm the opinion editor and then also the head of the editorial board.
Excellent.
And I'm Jake. I'm a news reporter.
Right. Jake, I know Jake. You were the, one of the first people to interview me way back last year, so.
Yeah.
It's good to see you again. Coming full circle. Good to see everybody else. It's good to meet everybody else, too.
Yeah, um, so I guess to kick us off, let's, uh, we are the, um, student newspaper, the student voice at the U Dub. So U Dub question, um. Let's see. So how did going to the U Dub shape you as an individual, um, and as a potential candidate now for District Four?
Yeah, well, I was a student filmmaker here at U Dub, uh, a decade and a half ago. Um, was a member of UAW four one two one, um, the academic, Union for Academic and Student Employees here. You know, um, a lot of the stances that I have taken in this race with respect to the need for more affordable housing and more social housing, um, the fact that we're going to have to seriously reform our city zoning code if we want to get that housing. Really is an outgrowth, I think, of research and independent studies that I had the opportunity to do here at the university. I was a filmmaker and a historian for the Seattle Civil Rights and Labor History Project, or I should say, a, um, a student um, historian for the Seattle Labor, Seattle Civil Rights and Labor History Project that delved into the nuances of Seattle's zoning code and land use decisions and the roots that those land use decisions have in a pretty ugly history of, of racism and segregation in, in the city. And the fact that the reason why, you know, our city, I think, is, is in a lot of ways as segregated as it is. The fact that there is the lack of affordable housing that there is is really can be chalked up to the fact that these zoning codes, which I learned about as an undergrad, you know, fifteen years ago, um, outlaw multifamily housing in most of the city. So I think, you know, for other candidates, there is a process of education that has to happen around something as niche, if you will, as historical racism in Seattle in particular, and the ways that um, single family zoning has reproduced that. But for me, that was a policy priority coming right out of the gate because it was part of the experience that I had as a filmmaker here who was, who was making films to educate um, Seattle area youths about this topic. The, the films that I made as a filmmaker with the Seattle Civil Rights and Labor History Project, I understand, are still being used to this day by Seattle schools. And, and they're sort of packaged and sent out in DVD form to, to schools as learning aids in the area, so. You know, that's, I think, my, my commitment to try to make Seattle a better place and a more inclusive place really started at the university.
Can you explain to our readers, um, your stance on upzoning in Seattle versus upzoning on the Ave? I know that those two differ.
Yeah, it's a, it's a really, really good question to draw a distinction on. So I support comprehensive zoning reform in, in, in blunt terms because apartments are illegal in eighty percent of Seattle. So when we talk about upzones or rezones throughout the city, what we're talking about is when you're driving through areas like Bryant, or you're driving through a lot of areas like Wallingford, or you're driving through certain areas like Sandpoint or Laurelhurst. You look around and some of those neighborhoods actually look like suburbs within a city, right? And the reason for that is because it's actually illegal to build duplexes and apartments and the kinds of housing that I think students and young people and families just starting out generally tend to live in. So I wanna see a comprehensive zoning reform to make sure that we can get apartments in more of the city. The Ave is an important exception because number one, it is not zoned for single families. So when you drive down the Ave, you feel like you're in a city, right? There's storefronts and, um, you know, commercial storefronts and then residential spaces on top of some of those storefronts, which is not legal in most of the city. Um, there's a certain amount of density, a certain amount of bustle. I think there's also a certain amount of, um, immigrant and POC owned businesses that would really, really be at risk for displacement if we were to open that area up to new uh, commercial development. So, uh, and so as I support zoning reform throughout the city comprehensively for single family zones, there are important exceptions to be made for areas where, um, for areas that are not zoned for single family homes, for areas that don't look like suburbs within a city, we wanna make sure that people in those areas are not at the risk of displacement. And I should add that if we had done what we were, we were supposed to do to make it so that Bryant and Wallingford and Roosevelt, Ravenna, Maple Leaf have more apartment buildings in them. The question of upzoning the Ave would not come with as much desperation because we would have had more apartment and housing options elsewhere, so that we wouldn't be looking to the Ave as the one strip that's gonna get us all of our affordable housing. And so we have to upzone the heck out of it in order to make up for a lack of affordable and dense housing elsewhere. So that's kinda, that's kinda the way that I think about this issue. And, um, it's a really, really important one for people that wanna see Seattle grow and have enough housing for people that are here, but also don't wanna see, um, some of the folk, the first folks who tend to get displaced, displaced. We don't wanna have that happen.
Um, and, uh, not upzoning the Ave is an area where you and your opponent agree. It, can you speak to, um, perhaps the reasoning if there's difference there, or, um?
Right.
Or other, other areas regarding the Ave where you differ?
Yeah, well, I'm not so certain that we, that we agree entirely because I have called in the middle of, um, halting the upzone of the Ave, I have also called for commercial rent control, which my opponent has not called for. And commercial rent control is a, it's a couple of things. Number one, it is a proven stopgap that will make it so that some of the businesses that are at risk of displacement don't have their rents skyrocket um, as rents have for both working people and for small business owners. But it's also a way of pushing back against really, really big, um, corporate developer power that would have no problem coming into an area like the Ave and displacing a lot of folks. And part of the reason why I think I've supported commercial rent control as an anti, um, as, as a form of of, um, resisting sort of the hold that corporate developers have, have had over our city and for-profit developers have had over our city is because a lot of those corporate developers are backing my opponent. I mean, let's be frank about that. Amazon dumped a million and a half dollars into the race yesterday. Some pretty big developers like the Hedrine Corporation that have roots to, um, um, supporting Trump nationally have backed my opponent. And so it's not a surprise that I would be the only one calling for commercial rent control because I don't have to worry about pushing back against, um, some of these big corporate, um, developer donors because they haven't gone the way of my campaign in this race. They've supported my opponent. So I think the commercial rent control aspect of it is about having the ability to not just say on paper we wanna halt an upzone, but it's also about legislatively putting something in place that's gonna put some actual show that you actually have some integrity and follow through on that, on that issue.
How do you juggle, I mean, obviously, you want a large scale housing increase. How do you juggle that with retaining U District's character?
Well, I think have you ever, you know, have you ever looked at or seen sort of old pictures of what the university district used to look like? This neighborhood used to actually be called Brooklyn. That's why we have a Brooklyn Avenue here, right? So at one point in time, there was no university here. The university actually used to be located downtown. That's why there's University Street downtown. U Dub actually still owns that land and it's a huge source of revenue. But at one point in time, there was no university here, then there was. At another point in time, um, maybe there weren't dorms here, and then there were. Uh, at one point in time, in nineteen twenty seven, I think, was when Husky Stadium opened. A lot of that area as recently as the nineteen sixties used to be landfill. And so there's these really epic pictures that you can see of Husky Stadium in the background flanked by like four or five acres of just open trash that only closed in the late sixties. I bring all of these things up to say that the area has evolved, the character has changed. That's part of the reason why people wanna live in cities is because they're dynamic, they don't stay static. And so, you know, I think it's perfectly possible to say that we wanna have more of a commitment to social housing. We wanna make sure that students aren't choosing between textbooks and food in this area. And also say that this is a college town and, and there are certain things that people wanna hold on to with that experience. I mean, I know I feel tremendously nostalgic whenever I'm on campus. It does not matter what's going on in my life, what how busy the campaign might be going. Like, when I, when I come to campus and when I'm in the surrounding area, it's tied to certain very, very fond memories that I have that I know a lot of other people have as well. And so some of the things that we might wanna do to consider holding on to that at the same time that we're moving into the future is, is making the Ave pedestrian only, making it so that more people can actually come to explore the Ave on foot because when it's mostly dominated by cars or the area is mostly dominated by cars, you're actually limiting the amount of people that can have access to the area. You see these, I'm in the, the Seattle Numtots page on, on Facebook, so like I see these memes that get posted of like, here's what it take. Here's how many people you could move via car, via bicycle, and then on foot. And then you look at the one on foot and it's like seriously like twenty or fifteen times more people that you can, um, that you can sort of fit and move on any given street. So if we're talking about historical character or something that we're supposed to be appreciating and enjoying, we should open that up to as many people um, as we can by maybe making the Ave, following the recommendations of the U District Mobility Group and making the Ave um, a pedestrian only street would be something that I would say we can, we can absolutely do.
Um, speaking of that group and pedestrianizing the Ave, um, I know, like, in a debate you've mentioned, um, that you wa- would wanna see that in twenty years. Um, and that was kind of how the question was framed, but ideally, how soon would you wanna see that happen? And also what portion of the Ave, if you could just explain a little bit more about what portion of the Ave would be pedestrianized?
Right, yeah, twenty, I feel like, I feel like that was probably, the twenty years was probably the question that was asked of me. Then maybe I said yes to it, but while also thinking twenty years seems kinda late. I mean, I don't know if I'll just say that twenty years seems kinda late. Like, I would prefer that that would be two or five. And so the portion of the Ave that I would, I would like to see become pedestrian only is really the main sort of the main strip. I mean, everything from, I guess, Schmitz Hall on the south end up to, um, you know, the farmer's market on, on Saturdays and Sundays is, goes all the way up to past fiftieth, right? So fifty second. I think that's, that's about the area that I would like to see, um, become, become, you know, pedestrian only.
And obviously, the university has changed a lot since you were here.
Right.
Just in the past fifteen years, do you think that's?
Jake was trying to do his bid to make me feel old. You know, it hasn't changed that much, Jake. No, it really, it really, really has. Oh, and sorry, ask your question one more time. I was.
Do you think it's a good thing in the ways the university has changed since you were here?
Yeah, I think, you know, it depends on how you feel about Tower Records, you know, which used to be a CD store that was open, I think it closed in two thousand and five versus Urban Outfitters. I think that's what's there now. Um, it depends on how you feel about Twice Old Tales, a bookstore that used to be where the Chase Bank is now. I mean, I know I would have preferred another used bookstore over a big corporate bank with, with ties to some, some pretty gnarly polluters. So I, I think that the, the change as far as we've seen more housing get built, I know that there's a lot more student housing here now than there was when I was going to school. It was, um, it was, it was pretty much McMahon, Haggot, and Terry were the, the three, and if you weren't placed in one of those, you're, you're, you're probably living off campus or something like that. So um, I understand that there are just more housing options, I think, on campus, and so I think that's definitely a good thing. You know, change, change happens and it can go one of two ways. I think that too much of the change has not actually gone to mitigating some pretty rampant tuition hikes that we've seen in the years following the Great Recession. And so, y- you know, I think that it's, that's why it's important to have a really strong city council that's gonna help to direct the growth and the direction of people who need to benefit from it the most. A good example of this, I think, is the U Dub Master Plan where we saw, um, you know, only four hundred. There's only, the city council was, was able to extract only a commitment of four hundred new affordable units. And even those were not treated as mandatory, um, from the university. And when you add that to the fact that there are many childcare centers that are gonna be tied to some of these developments that are gonna go up, which aren't gonna be affordable, the message that's being sent to working families is that you're on your own. To families that are making less than seventy thousand dollars a year, the message is you're on your own. And we can't, we just can't do that. We can't have that. If I were on city council, as that master plan was being litigated, I would have liked to, I think that I would be, you know, more of a champion for sticking up for some of the working families in this area and trying to get more, um, from some of these big developers that are making, you know, money hand over fist in the city. So I think some of those changes have been for the better. But I think that definitely some of them have been, um, you know, changes that have further disenfranchised people that need to have more of a foothold in the city.
Um, I know we wanna ask more about the campus master plan, but before we move fully off the Ave. Um, this week we had a writer cover at the twentieth Boba Restaurant that opened on the Ave. So I wanted to ask whether you had a favorite of those twenty or any that you frequent.
Or any of your favorite restaurants on the Ave that were there?
Yeah, well, my favorite restaurant on the Ave hands, hands down is Flowers. I was actually just there last night. And that's for night, night, favorite nighttime restaurant. If it's before, uh, seven PM, I think I'm normally gonna be at, at Aladdin's or something like that.
Which Aladdin's?
Very good question. I think in recent years, you know, the one that's, that's, that's northernmost is really caught up. But I think there's something much grittier and, and, um, I wanna say I have a lot more nostalgia around the one that's, um, south.
So you're a fan of dingy couches?
I, you know, there's something about it. I feel, yeah, I feel like I'm, I'm an undergrad again, still, you know, still you know, making my way through the Communist Manifesto or whatever it was I was reading, um, you know, fifteen years ago. So I, yeah, I have to go with the dingier one. Yeah.
All right, um, back to the master plan.
Yeah.
Would you have voted for it in the form that passed, had you been on the council at the time?
I would have to say no. Um, I would have to say that there was just too much that was given and not enough that the city received in return. And there were too many people that needed to see that master plan become a clear signal that both the city and the university were willing to partner with one another to provide a safety net to you know, people that are just coming to this area to try to get an education. And I do not think that the master plan, as it was constructed, passed that smell test. I think that, as you mentioned, we were, we were talking about before, there was just too much there that, um, we weren't able to get as far as affordable housing. To where I don't think that I could have supported that in, in good conscience. So I would have to say no.
Yeah, um, you had mentioned, um, I believe in a previous forum that, and you had just talked about it then, the four hundred or four hundred and fifty units was too few. Do you have an idea of, um, what number might have gotten you to a yes? Had you been on the council fighting for that, like you mentioned?
Well, I mean, the, the, the studies that, you know, numerous government agencies, be it the city or the county, have, have done, have indicated that we need to see tens of thousands, approaching hundreds of thousands of new housing units region wide if we're serious about meeting the affordability crisis at the scale that it exists. So you have to think ten times that number would have been more appropriate. I mean, a commitment of four thousand homes, four thousand units that are accessible to people making less than sixty percent or fifty percent of area median income. That's, that's a starting point to me. I mean, four hundred is, that, that doesn't even keep up with the, the size of the, the incoming freshman class any given year. So, and that's to say nothing of people that are just moving to the region generally, who might be living in District Four generally, that are not even necessarily part of the campus community. So I don't even know how, how four hundred units that are not even, again, not even treated as mandatory. So it's like, could you please, hey, do you think, you know, when you get around to it, you could build these four hundred units? I just don't see how that is even like, how you can even negotiate that with a straight face and say that you're doing anything with that plan to actually make the, the city more affordable. So I think four thousand, you know, I think we need to get that number up by a factor of ten, and then I would feel like we'd actually be playing ball at the, at the negotiation table. But four hundred is, is, is just laughable. I thought it was, I read about it in The Times as it was happening. I thought it was a typo.
Other than that concern, do you think the campus master plan puts forward a good vision of the university in terms of size and scope?
I'll tell you. Yeah, I think one thing that it got right was that it treated, it, it exempted childcare facilities from the square air, the square footage of any given development so that it doesn't count towards the amount of si- the sizing requirements for some new developments. I think that was a step in the right direction because you have people in District Four and beyond and in Seattle who are paying as much for childcare per month as they are for rent. And so the message, you know, that you're sending, you're, you're really just imposing a cost of living that is just backbreaking on so many families that, you know, I think it, it sets up a really stark generational divide where if you were born fifty years ago in this country, or four, thirty or forty years ago in this country, you had you know, the promise of subsidized housing, subsidized education, subsidized benefits as in exchange for a couple of years of serving in the military, a more or less universal guarantee of jobs. And for members of our generation and younger, I think that's just a pipe dream at this point. And one of the ways that you see that most acutely is in the childcare crisis where, you know, people who are having families, starting families much later are doing so for economic reasons and even, or econo- because of economic stressors. And then when they get to the point where they finally feel like they've been able to scrape and claw their way into the stability that you need, I think to raise, um, strong families into their thirties, their mid thirties, then they're paying out of their nose for childcare expenses. And it's just, you know, you, you couldn't, if you were to sit in a lab and design a, I think, a system that was inequitable, and that was your goal, you're gonna sit there and you're like, how can we make like legit sit here and try to make the most inequitable city that we can, you would draw something resembling Seattle today. So I think that the, the childcare, um, you know, the, the sizing requirements around childcare facilities and exempting those from developer, developer limits, I think, was a step in the right direction, but there's still so much more that we can be doing on, on that issue.
I wanna talk more broadly about, um, the U Dub and their role within the community, and I'm wondering if you see other ways in which the U Dub is either a partner in the community or a roadblock to progress in Seattle.
Yeah, well, I think if you were to ask, um, the U Dub House Staff Association, which is right now um, trying to get a fair contract and fair wages from the U Dub, or if you were to ask UAW four one two one, which last year went on strike for better wages and, and, you know, some benefits that could mitigate some of these rising costs of living that we're talking about. If you were to ask, um, campus partners from vulnerable groups who watched as none other than Milo Yiannopoulos was invited to campus a couple of years ago in the aftermath of Trump getting elected, I think they would all tell you that the U Dub has been a pretty big roadblock, to say the least, um, towards, you know, building, I think, the, the progressive, inclusive campus community that we proclaim externally. And so so much of this race is gonna really have to be about having, you know, so much of, of, of being a, I think, a responsible council member from District Four is about understanding that you have to stand up to U Dub admin for some pretty big fights, um, around wages, around human rights, around affordability, as we were talking about earlier. And not allowing the U Dub to operate as a Vatican within District Four, where they're just exempt from the concerns that the broader community has. And so, yeah, I would have to say, based on who I've talked to and who I've been spending my time around in this campaign, which is a lot of POC folks, our staff is, um, almost everybody comes from marginalized backgrounds, whether they're LGBTQIA plus folks or, um, young women. And so their perspective is one that informs how I look at issues surrounding District Four. So from, from their vantage point, which has become in a lot of ways my vantage point, and we have the first, you know, unionized campaign staff in city council history, if I'm not mistaken, not just locally, but nationally. Their vantage point is that the university, because of all these labor struggles that we have seen, has really been more of a roadblock than, um, I think, the opposite on, on some pretty important questions.
Uh, would they see the university, um, capable of being a partner, um, to the council?
I, I don't know about the university administration as such. I know that there are a number of campus groups. I think of UAW four one two one in particular and USAS, United Students Against Sweatshops, SEIU ninety five. I think of individual groups as being real coalition partners already in this campaign. I think one of the main things that we can work with the U Dub on is on land use decisions, the fact that we have a couple of, um, light rail stations that are getting ready to open up. You know, in the next couple of years, we have to have some real conversations around how the transit oriented development and the, the density that we need to see around those light rail stations, how that can look, what we need that to look like. So I think that there's, there's, there's avenues for collaboration there for sure.
Um, I wanna talk more about, uh, the idea of unions and your strike fund. So you plan to pledge forty percent of your salary to a strike fund. We were talking earlier and wondering why, of all the issues that you could donate that salary to, why did you choose a strike fund?
Right, and so it, it has to do with the fact that I actually have a background as a labor organizer and, you know, understand that and, you know, and in a district where we have a union representing fifty-five hundred um, academic and student employees who have had to go on strike, that a lot of them felt like they kinda had to maybe end that action earlier than they would have liked because of the real economic pressures that face workers so that if there's an actual material commitment to helping some of these workers be able to sustain that bargaining process for longer, that would have a real material, positive material impact on the lives of thousands of workers in the city because not every worker decides to engage in direct action. Not every worker even decides to join or become an active member of a union once they have joined. But the workers who do make that decision understand that they're making a sacrifice and they're engaging in that action for the benefit of their entire union membership. So that being able to directly support those workers individually in their, in their striking action feels like the least that I could do as a council member who would be making, I should add, a hundred and ten thousand dollars a year. Um, Seattle City Council is one of the best paid city council salaries in the country. And taking that down to seventy thousand dollars a year, which is still right on par with the area median income, feels like what needs to be done from leadership that is talking about stepping up for some of the most vulnerable workers, it's putting an actual sentiment behind, or an actual material commitment behind that sentiment. Now, I also understand that not every worker is always gonna be striking every, you know, every budget season, or not all of the funds that would be in that strike fund would be used. So I would then like to see those funds sort of diverted elsewhere to certain not-for-profits. But for me, direct aid is really one of the, the most powerful ways you can get involved in politics. And so I would, I would, if, if the strike fund, I really wanted to just make the commitment that, look, forty percent of my salary, by preference is that this is where it would go because we would see enough action to legitimate having that much money. And I did, I did the math. It's a lot of money, um, having that much money go towards a strike fund. Um, but if, if it, if, if there are not enough strikes or whatever the case might be, I would like to see that, um, those funds go elsewhere towards a combination of not-for-profit charities or whatever the case, case might be. Yeah.
You, you are saying that forty percent of your salary would be going towards that? But how would you convince other city council members or other organizations to match your donations and like?
Yeah, well, I I don't necessarily know that other city council members would want to. And I'm not necessarily asking them to as much as I hope that it's a lead by example sort of situation where I hope others who get elected and maybe even folks who are already elected do some reexamining about some of the privileges that they enjoy as a result of being, you know, pretty well compensated city employees, um, who are gonna have um, some pretty healthy pensions as a result of public funds. Just to think about, I would encourage others to just think about the optics of that at the same time that we have, you know, a houseless population that's as visible as it is now. So I wouldn't, I wouldn't necessarily go on a, a, um, you know, go on a, on a tour sort of hat in hand, hoping that others join me in this pledge. But I do hope that making the pledge has been a source of reflection for, um, other aspiring and current public servants. A source of reflection for um other aspiring and current public servants.
Oh, on the council, it doesn't have hot, very high favorability ratings. Right now, how would you, would you be looking to build unity or maintaining hardline stances that you have?
Yeah, I mean, I think, and that's a, that's a, I appreciate the way that you phrase that question there. I think that the. You know, look, my my policy stances, I think, are popular with the council as it's currently constructed. I think that. Council members, Mesquita and Gonzalez have talked about the need for comprehensive zoning reform. I know that's a big priority for them. Council member Herbold cares a lot about anti displacement. We're talking about the Ave um earlier. You know, and Tammy Morales looks like she's got a pretty clear path to victory down in District Two. I think Shama's gonna do pretty well. And there's certainly a lot of um, I'll say affinity for for. The 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 policy considerations between the three of us. I think there's a lot of overlap. So the building, building that coalition, I think, is not gonna be necessarily as hard as it seems. I think we're the only campaign in this race that has actually enjoyed the endorsement of a sitting city council member in Mike O'Brien. So that honestly, the question about how to go about building alliances with a pretty progressive city council. I think that's actually a better question for Alex who decided to not show up for your guys' interview than it is for me because. Frankly, the policy stances that we have taken, we've taken them because we know that there's momentum for them on the council already. And I think that my opponent would be more swimming upstream. I mean, if you imagine, who's gonna have an easier time working with Tammy Morales and Shama Sawant, me or my opponent? I mean, just like, look at it from that vantage point. In a council that is gonna be disproportionately person of color, mostly women. I think mostly a council that people have understood as left of center. I think a candidate that opposed Sound Transit Three, that opposed the move Seattle levy, that does not support the Seattle Green New Deal. Has not proclaimed any leadership whatsoever around searching for progressive revenue sources to address the homelessness crisis. I think that candidate would actually be more out of step with the current climate of the council than um one who is. You know, not taking those policy stances. So I would be curious to see what what Alex's answer to that question would be.
And would you be looking to govern in the mold of a council member, Sawant, who has been, you know, polarizing? On the council and has had trouble building coalitions of councilmen?
Right, it's a fair question. I mean, there are, there are real differences. I am a forty third L D Democrat. Um Shama Sawant is a member of Socialist Alternative. I do think that it is possible to have strong relationships with coalition partners and. Anti racist groups, other city council members with whom I do not necessarily agree on every issue. And so, you know, it's gonna be, I think, the the leader, the differences in leadership are gonna be. You know, apparent implicitly or explicitly to folks who have sort of observed the way that I have conducted myself on the campaign trail. I can't speak for Shama. Um I can't for council members to want. I know on my side of it, I have experience actually. With Office of Arts and Cultural Affairs, actually leading collaborative focus groups where we're going neighborhood to neighborhood, talking to individual art. Artists, individual arts writers, gallery owners. In an attempt to transform King Street Station as a very comprehensive and collaborative process. Um and I would think that I would bring that skill set and that experience to City Hall as well.
So in coalition building and um collaborative leadership. As a council member, do you see yourself? This is, I guess, similar to how we started, but maintaining absolute positions on policies or accepting incremental progress. Where we, where we can get it or um, cause I believe there's instances on the council where they failed. To achieve one goal, um and in doing so missed the chance to get pro- progress along the way.
Yeah, I mean, I would have to say that I, there are certain principles that I'm coming to the table with. As a candidate that would carry over with me as a council member. I don't think that I'm different from any other candidate ever, anywhere. In that. And I think that, you know, a really good, a good practical example of this. The way that you, the way that you're, you're talking about sort of the art of compromise versus maintaining certain principles is the question of the police. Officers Guild contract. Where I said I would not have voted to approve that Police Officers Guild contract because twenty five community groups, including the A C L U. Not exactly a bastion of radicalism um has said that that is a disaster for police accountability. I would have sided with the A C L U and not voting for that contract. That that's gonna be a hard, it's gonna be, it would have been really hard to have gotten me off of that position for a number of reasons. Um and so that's one area where I feel like there's a line in the sand. There are other areas where, look, the U Dub Master Plan, we were talking about this earlier. For me, four thousand units of affordable housing is a better look than four hundred that's not even treated as mandatory. If in the, in the middle of me saying four thousand is where we need to get to and I'm actually able to pull us up from four hundred to two thousand. Am I gonna say I'm not voting for this thing or I'm gonna continue to? Be a stick in the mud legislatively because we couldn't get to exactly the number that I would have said. I think that would be foolish to do. There's too many people that could actually benefit from. An additional sixteen hundred units of housing. For me to not approve that contract or try to make that sale politically to people. So I would have to say that. There are, there are, there are some issues on the numbers. Where I think you take, it's just like negotiating anything else. I mean, you, you take a stance that is. Even maybe even in excess of where you think it needs to be and then you try to pull the conversation in that, in that direction. And there are other stances where I think with the Police Officers Guild where there's just kind of a firm no around. In in approving pay increases and um funds for police facilities when we have a police. Force that's in essence under federal investigation, which is what a consent decree is. It's, it's federal investigation. So, yeah.
I wanna talk more about uh your ideas about policing or community policing and I know that you have. Talked before about the idea of um police abolition. And I'm wondering how with other candidates talking about an increase in police presence, how you can realistically. Bring that framework of police uh abolition into your policy ideas.
Right, so let's define, and I'm glad you brought this up. I think it's, it's important to define what exactly is meant by police abolition. Police abolition, and we had an abolitionist movement in this country in eighteen fifties, right? Where there were literal abolitionists who said that the institution of slavery. Should not continue in this country. It's a moral blight. If you're an economist even, you would have to admit that it was a drain on the resources of the country to continue to upkeep a cotton. Economy um as as the country was trying to industrialize. So we need to, on all kinds of fronts, people were like, slavery is really bad. We should end it. We should abolish it. The Thirteenth Amendment passes in the aftermath of a bloody civil war. And it makes a very, very clear stipulation that says slavery is illegal in this country except for punishment, except as punishment for a crime. So what we saw subsequent to the Civil War was the establishment of. An over aggressive and racist police apparatus, more recently, the rise of for profit policing. And a number of politicians who have not only apologized for these institutions, but also done their best to actually bolster them. And I'm thinking specifically of, I mean, Joe Biden's performance last night at the presidential debate was legendary again, right? You know, and I look at him and all I think about is the nineteen ninety four crime bill that he helped to author. Um a crime bill that criminalized many black and brown members of my generation as an old millennial. So when we talk about police abolition, it's a link back to recognizing. Contemporary policing has deep links to. A slave economy and deep roots to institutional forces of institutional racism that we should have long since turned our backs on. So that um it's about severing the link between contemporary policing and historical racism. That's what I mean by police abolition. If somebody thinks that that's an unreasonable position, if somebody thinks, well, you're never gonna get away from racist policing. That actually says more about their position than I think it does about mine. I think my position is actually more in line with saying. Here's how you can actually um revive the reputation around policing, which is, I think, at an all time, in a, in a, in a Black Lives Matter. Political reality, I think, is at an all time low, the reputation of policing in this country. Here's, I'm, what I'm suggesting is here are actual pathways that we can get to demilitarized policing. We can have. An expanded community service officer program in the city that. Where unarmed officers are the ones who are responding to people who are having mental health episodes or to houseless folks who. Need services. We can have fair enforcement in our uh public transportation. That is not fair enforcement, but is actually there to serve an ambassadorial role. For all the newcomers that we have to Seattle, people are getting lost in the trains. I mean. I thought I was going to University Street and that's not the University of Washington, like. People not knowing north from south on some of these trains, people not knowing that you're supposed to stand to the right of the escalator so that people on the left can walk up it. Like, we can actually have so called what are now security forces in our public transit that are. Sort of alerting people to some of these issues and encouraging people to ride transit as opposed to criminalizing. Um young, mostly black and brown people for riding the train to school, which is what we have now. So that's, we can have um the end to um the school to prison pipeline, which is very real in the city of Seattle with out of school suspensions. Very much deeming certain youths. In essence, as candidates for um the criminal justice system early. We can end sweeps of homeless encampments. That are costing the city ten million dollars a year and really amount to criminalizing people for being poor in public. And and obviously, our our house's population, L G B T Q I A plus and P O C folks are overrepresented in that population. So decriminalizing um poverty in essence also has a real link to. Ending racism in contemporary policing. So that's what I mean by, I'm talking about not a pie in the sky idea. I'm talking about literal legislative actions that we can take right now to sever the link between policing and. The worst forms of racism as they've been practiced in this country. Not everybody agrees. Some people think. Policing is fine. We need more police officers. And the response that I would give to that is if you had any other. Agency in the city that was under federal investigation, you'd have real doubts about whether or not they should be getting more money. I mean, imagine if the Office of Housing. Or imagine if U Dub was under federal investigation right now for, um, I don't know, like, repeated practices of like racist admissions. Practices, right? I'm just speaking hypothetically. People would be like, what is going on at U Dub right now? Before we can give them more resources to do anything, shouldn't they like not be investigated by the feds? That's the way that I feel about the consent decree with the police department. Where the Department of Justice has basically entered into a settlement with the police department to say. In exchange for us not suing you, we're gonna have to ask for some real police accountability measures. That's what a consent decree amounts to. And so we should probably figure out what's going on there, get our police department to the point where. It uh is in compliance with the consent decree. And I think that's a step towards, I think, building this, this model of policing that, you know, doesn't have these links to. You know, some pretty, pretty gnarly forms of historical racism.
And do you have like specific ways that you would like to see Seattle get into compliance with the consent decree, like certain?
Well, the, the, the Police Officers Guild fiercely resisted the accountability measures that were outlined. And these had to do with the higher firepower over officers who used. Um who committed uses of force that were found to be unconstitutional. And they were, why they resisted it, I think you would have to ask them. I have my ideas, but I think. That's really more a conversation that. Look, I mean, I recognize why it's important to have. The city, the city's police department not engage in unconstitutional uses of force. Does the Police Officers Guild recognize why that's important? I don't know. Sitting here, I can't tell you that that, that that's a priority for theirs because obviously if it was. They wouldn't have resisted the accountability measures in the current police contract, so.
Um I wanna talk about safe consumption sites. Quickly, um so I feel like many U Dub students perceptions of safe consumption sites are informed. By violence that they have, may have seen reported on specifically. Over the summer, we had a stabbing in front of a um needle exchange, which I know is not the same thing as a safe consumption site, but. But with those perceptions that, that people may have. How, like, do you think that people are misguided or how would you respond to those reactions that people have?
Yeah, I mean, public safety is a, is a concern and it's a real concern, especially for um some of the, you know, populations that are more. Likely to be um stalked, harassed. Badgered on our city streets. I think that there are a few things that we can do with some of the safe consumption sites to make sure. That they are safe consumption sites. I think about the use of street lighting, for example, which, you know, the city of Vienna with a. A few initiatives that, you know, they had put forward in the nineties, recognized that. Adequate street lighting in more shadowy areas of the, of the city. There is actually, that's, that actually has a real positive effect on. Which, which saves, which streets folks feel safe walking down and walking around. So I would think. Adequate light, lighting and signage around a consumption site. You know, we talked about the Community Service Officer Program. I think that could be a real place where you would see. Some staffing of those C S Os increase or bulk up is around one or two of those areas just to make sure that people had. The sense that there's a third party presence there who was looking out for, looking out for them and looking out for. Uh making sure that everything was going okay at these sites. And I think listening to the, you know, I don't know a hundred percent because I walk around with, you know, the privileges of a cis male. There are certain embodied privileges that I have that I know I walk around with and I know one of them has to do with. Generally feeling pretty safe in most. Interactions that I find myself in in public and on public streets, right? There are some pretty big exceptions because I'm a black male as well, but by and large. That is a privilege that I enjoy. So I think for me, it would be really, really important to listen to. Our L G B T Q I A plus commission and our city's women's commission, our disability rights commission, to hear from them. What a equity analysis around consumption sites looks like. And that's why those, that's why we have an Office of Civil Rights is because. They're doing the research and looking into. How the city can, can make sure that anything that it owns and operates is, is being owned and operated according to an equity lens. So I would. I have those two suggestions around streetlights and around the Community Service Officer Program, but I would defer to them. I would like to do a real. Um social justice analysis around a recent social justice initiative toolkit analysis around. How to make a safe consumption site the most equitable space that it could be.
Yeah, I just wanted to ask a question about um bike lanes. I know you've been an advocate for more um bike lanes. So if you could just. Speak a little bit more about that and like where you'd plan to put them and how soon that would, you would ideally want to see that in the community.
Yeah, so I think that we would wanna, we would want to see a interconnected bike network. That includes bikes along major arterial roads like Thirty Fifth Avenue Northeast for a number of reasons. Number one. You wanna encourage people to um bike as a way towards getting to work. That's where most of our carbon emissions come from. Is from people on their sort of work a day commute. So you don't wanna reroute some of these bike lanes only through greenways that are not necessarily accessible to major. Transit hubs and the same roadways that people get into and from on their cars on. Like, I think having those actually on. Um major arterial roads is important. So I support the Bike Master Plan as it was drawn up, which included a lot of lanes on, on roads like this. I also think that um, you know, pedestrian safety is really, really important to me. I don't know about for some of the other candidates, but it's a, definitely the case that. Bike lanes have been proven to have a dampening effect on high traffic speeds so that there's an auxiliary benefit to. Bike lanes on major arterial roads as well, which is that people who are walking are safer as a result as well. And the bikers are safer there too because. You know, you're discouraging really, really high speeds on some of these roads, so. I think that's what I would, that's what I would, that's where I stand and come down on, on building on our Bike Master Plan is that it's not enough to just say we support it. And to reroute it through parks or whatever the case might be, like. Let's, let's actually do something to reclaim the amount of space and resources that we've given over the years to, to cars. And one way that we can do that is with, you know, a comprehensive Bike Master Plan.
Other public amenity questions we had, uh we know that you talked about uh putting more public restrooms in Seattle or in D four. What would that look like specifically for this neighborhood?
Yeah, it's a good question. I mean. That's a really, really good question. I would want to, I think, identify certain areas where the need is the highest first. that's a really, really good question. I would want to, I think, identify certain areas where the need is the highest first. So areas where there's obviously high traffic, areas on campus where there are, you know, you, you sort of have to get people used to the idea of it and see how, how people see how convenient it is before you start branching out to other areas. So I would, I would do, I wanna, wanna do a little bit more research on where exactly the areas where we wanna see some of those public restrooms. I just know from talking to a lot of, you know, working families, people who are out with their kids, who are looking for a place to change folks, change kids, that that would be something that would be really, really positive. So I would, I would do some more research and get back to on where exactly we'd wanna see.
Can you talk about your time at Real Change? Obviously, brief before.
Yeah. It was short, but I learned a lot. I mean, you have to understand, I was, you know, I wrote, I wrote those really bad columns for The Daily, but fortunately, my, my, my career as a columnist did not end in two thousand and three. Some years later, in two thousand and fifteen, I was hired by City Arts Magazine as a, as a columnist, worked there for three and a half years. And so, you know, you work as a writer and as a columnist in, with the thought that, you know, maybe one day, I would like to also be the one who's responsible for keeping the trains moving on time, being an editor, looks like a lot of fun. I was like the one writer who actually thought that. So actually being hired as a, as a, as an editor for Real Change News as the interim editor, it was great. And it was, it was a short period of time, but I learned a ton from our houseless community, because, you know, the Real Change environment, the newsroom there, I think, is unlike any other newsroom I have been around. It's not to say it was better, of course, it's just different. And you're, you're talking with a lot of the vendors who are houseless folks, and they're coming in and letting you know how the interactions are going on the street. They're telling you about some of their personal concerns for security and shelter, which obviously for, for them are considerable, because they're houseless. But you're also learning to interact with them as people, which I think in our, in our, in our society, we look at houseless people and are encouraged to look at houseless people as others in some pretty insignificant, or some pretty significant ways that are unfortunate. And dehumanize both houseless folks and dehumanize us, and do something to chip away at our empathy. So honestly, the thing that was most memorable about the time that I spent at Real Change was, you know, coming in on, on Monday mornings, we went to press on, on Tuesdays, and so Monday was the day that we were, you know, it was like our, one of our most busy days, but we're sometimes talking with some of our vendors about, you know, football games that happened over the weekend. And, you know, I had bets going with, with one of my favorite vendors about, you know, whether the Hawks were gonna lose to the Niners and things of that nature, where you're just learning, I think, and you're, you're interacting with some of our most vulnerable residents and realizing that, you know, all this nonsense that we see from like the Seattle is dying documentary stuff and the ways that people talk about homeless people and stigmatize them are just terrible. They've had a really corrosive effect on our, on our, on our democracy and on our discourse. So for me, that's what I remember most about Real Change. In my time there was not long, because it turns out that running for city council and running a newspaper, unless, you know, you have a twin, you can swap in and out for either one of those things is like not really tenable. So that, you know, explains why I think my tenure there was as short as it was. But I, like I said, learned a lot while I was there, and I hope I left behind something significant as well.
And Rob Johnson left the seat that you're running for early, and now we have Abel Pacheco.
Sure.
Having had that experience, how would you assuage those concerns?
Well, I mean, I, I would tell voters of District Four that I worked, you know, I used to edit a newspaper when I was in, an underground newspaper when I was in tenth grade. And I worked as a columnist with the hope of becoming an editor. I received an editorship, editorship position weeks before I declared my candidacy for city council and had to turn my back on a job that I had really wanted since I was a teenager. Because I think that the city council needed real leadership on some pretty big considerations and questions. So that I would look at that really more in the light of leaving journalism, which was really the field that I had spent, I've spent as much time in as, as almost anything else, and leaving right as I feel like I could have made the most impact as a journalist, the editor of one of the biggest street newspapers in the country. I think that says something, it says something about the commitment that I had to the people of Seattle and District Four that I think I chose, in essence, not working for a year, which is what in, running a, a campaign entails, over, you know, a job that was pretty cool and that I think I, I could have been really, really happy at. So I would, I would, I would look at it in, in that light, that that's really more an affirmation of my commitment to getting leadership on the council than maybe a different interpretation.
Hypothetically, if you were, if you were handed a ballot and the two people for D four are Rob Johnson and Abel Pacheco, who would you vote for? Are you, are you writing in?
Am I writing in? That's a, that's a, that's a fun question. I would say, you know, Rob, I think even Abel would tell you Rob has him beat on experience. Rob spent a lot of years in urbanist circles that mean a lot to me and that many of whom have backed me and endorsed me in this campaign. He's a champion for public transit. I don't agree with necessarily all the things that Rob did. I have real qualms about the over-reliance, I think, on the for-profit housing market. And I think that his vote on, and resistance to the employee head tax, the Amazon tax, was unfortunate. I don't think that history is gonna judge any city council candidate that took the wrong stance on that issue very kindly, because the president isn't judging them very kindly either, I should add. But I would, I would, I would tilt towards Rob, but you know, it depends on how the campaign shook out. Yeah, there would be a campaign, so, yeah.
Had, had Rob not left the seat you just spoke of, how happy you were to have the job you left to run to city council.
Right.
But you also talked about your commitment to the change you wanna see in Seattle, which you have ran, had the seat not been empty.
Yes. Yeah, I was full-on planning on running against Rob. I mean, there were rumors that were circulating that he was not going to run, that didn't really impact the way that I prepared at all to run. I was thinking that he was gonna be an incumbent and, you know, he was the one that we were really gonna have to be running against.
Are you, do you feel better or more confident, I'd say, running against the opponent you have versus the incumbent you planned for?
I think, I think, and, and that is a good question, because I did do a lot of thinking about this, obviously, in preparing to run. I think that Alex presents a different set of challenges that maybe Rob doesn't. I think that it is definitely the case that Alex has found himself to the right of center on some pretty big issues. And that differentiating myself from somebody who supported Sound Transit Three or the Move Seattle levy, it's a little, it's harder to do politically, I think, than it is than somebody who opposed Sound Transit and opposed Light Rail in Seattle like Alex did. It presents a very stark contrast. You know, at the end of the day, I think that people would have just looked at, there's a potential that people would have looked at just me and Rob as like two, well, they're both two lanky urbanists. Like, what's the, like, what's really the, the contention here? Whereas with Alex, I think those contrasts are obviously a lot clearer as well. I will say this, though, there would have been a real potential for a really cool one-on-one basketball campaign event, 'cause I know Rob plays, and so doing that in a general election against Rob, I think, would have been pretty fun. But I don't, don't know what Alex's jumper looks like, but I think that that would be, it'd be a pretty easy game.
Let's end with, it's Oregon Hate Week. This is big week at The Daily. We have rivalry fundraiser, an issue we're working with The Daily Emerald down at Oregon. How do you think the game's gonna go? Are you gonna be watching?
Well, how are the Ducks doing this year? Are they ranked?
They're ranked higher than we are.
Yeah. I, I dislike the Oregon Ducks quite a lot. The colors, and it, it just brings back bad memories. I mean, for many years, they, we used to, we used to dominate in those games against them in the early nineties, and then it started to shift, I think, when we had some issues with sanctions and things like that in the later nineties. So, I don't know, I hope they win the game by a hundred points. That's, that's how I feel about it. I'll probably be canvassing when the game is going on, but I'll be listening, so, yeah.